That night.
Whoa.
Yes. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. Be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors hereby enters into a closed meeting for the purposes of discussing the following: Discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose, or the disposition of publicly held property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining positions or negotiating strategy of the public body. One, former Blacksburg High School property. Consultation with legal counsel and briefings from staff, members, and/or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation or briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of a public body. And consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding a specific legal matter requiring provisions of legal advice by such counsel. Mountain Valley Pipeline. Discussion and consideration of interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplinary, or resignation of specific officers, appointees, or employees of any public body. Social Services Board. Is there a motion to go into closed meeting?
No.
Second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Chairtuck?
Aye.
Six ayes, one abstain.
Is there a motion to go out of closed meeting?
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs, Ms. Perkins?
I abstain, I was not present at the closed meeting.
Chairtuck?
Aye.
Six ayes, one abstain.
Whereas, the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, whereas Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County of Virginia hereby certifies to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion conveying the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board. And this is our Board giving our word that we're only discussing the things that we're supposed to be talking about in closed meeting. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
I abstain, I was not present.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Chairtuck?
Aye.
Six ayes, one abstain.
At this time, I'm going to ask Carol Edmonds, or at this point in time, we're going to have an invocation in a moment of silence. After that moment of silence, I'm going to ask Carol Edmonds to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'm going to ask David Clark with VDOC to come forward to give us an update on road and issue projects in Montgomery County. Mr. Clark?
Good evening. Couple just updates, I'll do some maintenance and then do some construction projects, updates, maybe some of the stuff that's upcoming here in the future. Maintenance wise, between various storms and things we've had to clean up, we have done some, a lot of patching on Craig Creek Road, Lake Run, George's Run. We did do a chip seal on Plantation Road off of North Fork, I mean off of 460, Price of Fork. Worked on some site distance complaints on Rock Road, Merrimack, some shoulder repair on 460, Route 11, 460, Shawsville area, as well as just sort of the normal summertime machining roads and getting dust control complaints and starting all of our, you know, actually completed a lot of our mowing as well. Replaced a large pipe called Grand Lake Run, which brings me to another project that's coming up. You've got another culvert replacement coming up. We did one, it was last year, the year before, this is one very similar, there'll be a signal across, just like there is on Meta Creek, which is, you've been through Meta Creek, we're replacing the bridge on Meta Creek Road, it's got a signal in there. We are finished with the North Fork Road 603 section between 81 and Route 11, and I just drove through those, had some minutes, house got all the lines on it and everything, it looks really, really good, especially if you can remember what it used to look like, with all the rocks so close to the road. It's a really good looking project. About 600 Piney Woods Road is almost complete, and that's paving the last two miles of Piney Woods Road down to near the Floyd County line at Indian Valley. Some of the revenue sharing projects, we're finished with Lewis Springs Road, that one's done, and it looks good as well right now, we're in the middle of doing Brush Creek Road. They've done a lot of the grading work, most of the grading work is done on Brush Creek, couple more pipes, and then put the hard service on that, and then we'll begin working on sort of the design and talking to the residents on the upper end, the other end, I guess I should say, the near Floyd County end for work next year. Yellow Sulphur, that we just completed a small section of, we did two tenths back in the fall, we did another three tenths this past spring, and we'll begin working on the design for doing some of the rest that comes from Blacksburg and down to the railroad tracks, maybe another half mile next year. Upcoming projects, of course, is the 81 Bridge, that's the big one coming up, that's out for add right now, that's going to replace the northbound bridge over the New River on 81, and that'll be a several year project, obviously, so to replace the northbound, and does some ramp work there next at 105. I'll let you know, bids should be back next month, that's a longer bid process because it's such a large project. And other than some very future bridge work which we continue to do, the main ones there, the ones there on 81 and coming, oh, Huckleberry Lanes, the one I forgot, we're going to replace the culvert on Huckleberry Lanes, off of High Top Road, over the trail across this High Top Road, Huckleberry Lanes, the gravel road, dead end off to the side, we're replacing the culvert there, and it's going to be kind of a tricky traffic control situation because you've got the trail right there too, but I'll keep you updated when that's going to be, when that's going to happen. I've received the correspondence with the county, as well as some recent pictures on Mount Tabor Road, and there's been a request to prohibit trucks from there, I've all worked with the county staff, the prohibited trucks, we have to go through a public hearing process, so if it's the county's wish, which I believe it is, according to the last correspondence I got, we'll proceed with scheduling those with county staff and get a proper public hearing. You have to have a public hearing, you have to identify alternate routes and so forth, but it's serviceable, it can be done. And again, that would prevent, that would prohibit through trucks, if there were delivery trucks that needed to go to somebody out in Mount Tabor, they wouldn't prohibit those kinds of trucks, doing, just doing kind of regular deliveries, but the large trucks that are just trying to get through, misguided as they may be, to try to get them maybe to Jerome County, it would prohibit those. But that's all I have as far as updates, I'll give the, we're having any requests or any questions?
I'll start with Supervisor Shepherd, do you have any questions to Mr. Clark?
Yeah, and I don't know if you have any information on it, and if you're, been keeping up with it. Any progress on the Big Vein Road?
As far as I know, there's been a new property owner on the corner there, and we're working with the planning staff on what they need to get to us, because it's a, it's a process to deliver, to beat up the necessary right of way in these ones, but it looks like we can get that, and I think what we're looking at doing, the counties agree, I don't need a resolution on any of this, but I can do some, a little bit of work there on the site distance out there with county, sort of discretionary, countywide construction funds, very small amount, but it can, we'll get the site distance there.
That's all I have. Supervisor Demots?
Just a couple of things. Back to the Mount Tabor, we'll proceed, it looks like we'll proceed with a public hearing process, do we have any idea how long those take to coordinate, or would that be coordinated at the county level?
We do it with the county, I think there's a minimum amount of time, it's got to be advertised in the paper maybe three times, but it can be done, if not next month or seven months after.
Okay. And then, we had, at our June 13th meeting, a citizen came forward in the 2300 block of Mount Pleasant Road in Shawsville, and said the brand-new road got washed out, and it has not yet been fixed. He said that stormwater runoff is getting particularly bad and flooding, et cetera, so I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
We really have, it's gone longer than I wished we'd get, and there's a lot of work needs to be done on Mount Tabor, I mean, excuse me.
Mount Pleasant.
Yeah.
And then, and then the final thing, I just wanted to ask a couple of questions about the process for the community meeting in Blacksburg for the 460-North Main Interchange, that's on July 25th at 4 o'clock. Do you know where it is, and what is that community meeting like?
The town's holding that meeting, it's the town's meeting, again, and this is the town's process to submit an application, we're assisting them with some data that they will need for the, for the application. But I'm not sure where, I knew it was coming up soon, I didn't know they had set a firm date, but I knew it was going to try to be late July or early August. But the town's going to resubmit, or submit another project under our House Bill II process for a, probably a larger scale project, an interchange at North Main and 460 bypass.
And so VDOC is helping the town come up with some different concepts?
Yeah, yeah, we're just sort of assisting them, they're going to submit something, but our staff is helping them with things like, you know, an estimate, what type of interchange would be allowed, 460s on the national highway system, so you have to abide by federal regulations on the type of interchanges that can be done, so we're helping along that process, so they know, we want to submit something that wasn't going to be approved by, you know, the federal highway administration.
And that's it? Thank you.
Supervisor Biggs?
Now, you answered my, my two, we're with Ms. Demots about the Mount Tabor, and also about the North Main, so thank you.
Supervisor Creed?
No report.
Supervisor Perkins?
Not right at this time, please.
Supervisor King?
Just two things, are you still keeping in mind Piney Woods Road's speed limit?
Yes, they should do a speed, they'll do a speed study, and I reconfirm that that was not part of the original design, an automatic speed reduction or speed limit, just put it that way, because it wasn't posted before, it'll remain unposted until there's a speed study done, but that'll be the first one they do once the contractor's out.
So when the contractor's out, you're going to start right on it?
Yeah, then they'll do the speed study.
All right, and do you still have any signatures? Did you get a copy of them?
I do have that, yep, and that'll go along with the request.
All right, and what about the speed limit on Route 8 next to the golf course? We've been talking about that for about a year.
Yes, I've got something back, I don't think that was approved, I'll have to get the specifics of that and see why it was not, it may have to do with, you know, sort of catch 22 speed limits, you know, you try to set the speed for what the predominant travel is, except in residential business sections, which is exempted by a certain section of code, but I'll find out the specifics of that.
All right, thank you. Just, I just have one question, just an update, and is there any plans at this point in time in place for yellow sulfur? I got a request, and just, I know it's on our seven-year, our six-year plan, excuse me, but I didn't know if there was any updates of any immediate plans for you on yellow sulfur.
We keep doing this, does it each year, as we can, because it's easier to do that than something like Piney Woods, which was a two-mile road, and it takes a longer time to get that designed. I'm hoping to do a section on each end next year, that's, it'll be like another half-mile section on Christianburg End, another half-mile section on the Blacksburg End, which would leave a one-half section, a half-mile section in the middle, which will be the toughest section, because that's the one near Black Bear Road, and you've got all the curves, you have a cemetery, and there are a lot of houses, and that's going to be a tough section to do. But, no, we're planning on doing, hopefully, another mile next year.
Thank you. Well, did that spur any other additional questions or any other, thank you very much, David.
Thank you all.
The next item on our agenda is public hearings. These items are set up on our, for public hearings, for us to receive input from the public in regards to each one of the items. We're going to go through the signup list, but if you have not signed up, that doesn't mean that you can't address the Board. Again, this is our turn to listen to you. If you're here speaking on behalf of, say, a couple or two or three people, we have no objections for those folks standing up and being recognized, but there may be someone who says something that you disagree with, this is not the time to boo or to cheer, but rather to give an opportunity to have that dialogue. And the first item that we have is intent to dispose of county-owned property, the former AEP property, 12.37 acres, and the first person I have signed up is Jeff Nguyen. Jeff, would you please come forward, you will have five minutes, we would ask that you state your name and address.
Thank you, my name is Jeff Nguyen, 841 Crestwood Drive in Blacksburg, and that's in the county. This is my first time doing this, I have a handout, a little graphic, and I don't know if it's appropriate to share.
Can you give it to the clerk, and she'll be more than happy to...
All right. So this parcel, if you haven't been to it, is just beautiful, you deserve to take a field trip out and just walk this, this property, it's just gorgeous, it's got a field, fenced room, forest, it's fabulous. You can yoke here, so have to do it. I've been running, walking dogs, and sometimes sledding in this area for years now, and it's going to use more and more, I would estimate maybe between 50 and 100 unique permanent county residents are using this parcel on a daily basis. And what's interesting is, I'm going to have to, I'll wait until that gets passed around, and show you the graphic here. I would note that, you know, kids have a safe place to play up there, and disposal of this private property to private party will directly impact quality of life for the entire community. So I took this screen cap on the second page, just want to look at that, to give you an idea of how quality this property is used as an open space recreational area. Those paths are people walking around the property, walking their dogs, or walking with their kids, or just taking a hike, and I think that speaks to the value of the property to the community. I feel like there are very few county recreational or open space areas available in our community and that part of the county, and it seems like for recreational use seems the most appropriate for this particular parcel. I know some other folks are going to speak to this as well, and I feel like it's a pretty minimal input expense for the county, considering, I think that most of what's happening is this mowing that takes place twice a year on the, on the property. I imagine there's other things I'm not even aware of in terms of cost for you all, certainly opportunity cost for tax purposes. Another area of concern for the neighborhood is the topography and geological that is very karst-y, it's one of the most karstic areas in the county, and any kind of build-out or altering of the topology of the area will change how the groundwater's being absorbed, and it's going to impact any community or any house, any parcel that's sort of downgrade from this park. And so any kind of building or moving this, the dirt around, the fill around the property is going to potentially impact the whole community, since everything is downstream of this parcel. If you take that field trip, you'll notice, you can see 270 degrees around it, it's just fabulous. Also, you know, the area has had, you know, karst activity recently, so these two sinkholes have developed recently, in addition to the four or five existing legacy sinkholes that are already on this property in question. Additionally, some other comments, Schiller Lane's a very narrow road, and future development plans should consider improvements. It is also possible, and I'm not sure about this one, like the nearby High Knob property, it could very well be in the safety of the expanding Executive Airport. And what I'm really hoping the Board will consider doing, rather than moving forward promptly on this, is perhaps give it some time to reflect on the input that our citizens of Montgomery County are going to give you, as well as perhaps give some folks in the community an opportunity to work with, maybe the town of Blacksburg or some other resources to we can protect this wonderful, unique parcel of land. Once disposed of this recreational open space, will vary, you know, big spending will be forever lost to us in this part of the county. I really appreciate the opportunity to comment, thank you very much.
Thank you. It looks like Roy Jameson? Mr. Jameson, please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Hi, my name is Roy Jameson, I live at 1808 Garden Spring Drive in Blacksburg, Virginia, adjacent to Nellie's Cave Park. I'm a semi-retired karst hydrogeologist in Caver with an M.S. in Geology from West Virginia University. I've been involved in research in caves and karst since 1969, and have spent extensively on cave and karst geology and hydrochemistry of caves in West Virginia, Minnesota, and Mexico. The property under consideration here lies in karst terrain. Karst is typically characterized by sinkholes, sinking streams, caves, and springs. The property is unsuitable for commercial development for apartments and single-family residents or other commercial uses. It is best left as undeveloped land attached to Nellie's Cave Park. The unsuitability is due to two factors. The first is the potential for collapse of subsurface voids to create new sinkholes. The second is the potential increase in adverse effects by chemical or sediment pollution on the Ellet Valley Millipede in the karst west of North Fork and Roanoke River, and east of Main Street in Blacksburg. There are a number of sinkholes of varying sizes, development would require significant modification of the current landscape because of the large sizes of several of the sinkholes. Nearby properties on all sides have sinkholes as well. At least one new collapsed sinkhole has appeared in the last year on the neighboring street Crestwood Drive. Additional collapses are possible, particularly if current subsurface drainage patterns are disrupted, as would occur if the land were developed for housing. There is reason to believe that there's a well-developed subsurface drainage system draining the sinkholes via solutionary large fractures and caves in the limestone in Dolomite Bedrock. Drainage is most likely to the east to small springs in the Ellet Valley, or to springs and creeks that drain to the river in the valley, or south to Cedar Run. The Ellet Valley Millipede, scientific name Pseudotrenia tavernarum, to quote William Orndorff in an email from today, July 11th, "The Ellet Valley Millipede is one of the most at-risk cave-adapted species in Virginia." The species is listed as endangered under the Virginia Endangered Species Act, but the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service so far is declining to pursue federal listing despite reports of our agency reporting the extreme endemicism of a high degree of threat to this species. William Orndorff is the Karst Protection Coordinator of the Virginia Karst Program and the Virginia Department of Conservation and Recreation. Mr. Orndorff added that, quote, "Preservation of the forested slope from the eastern edge of Blacksburg eastward to the Roanoke River is essential for the long-term protection of the Ellet Millipede." A number of studies are needed before any rezoning is done for karst properties that lie within the drainage areas that could affect the Ellet Valley Millipede. First, diatracing is needed to better delineate the drainage basin and identify subsurface flow paths. Second, better inventory and mapping for the region, the sinkhole distributions needed. Finally, for any residential or commercial development within the karst, geophysical studies are needed before construction begins. Resistivity, gravity, and other surveys, including extensive soil abordings, are generally needed to identify depth to bedrock, the presence of bedrock penicils, the presence of air-filled voids, and the presence of buried sinkholes. Buried sinkholes are often not visible on air photos, topographic maps, nor are they typically discernible when rocking, walking across the landscape. And I have, at the bottom of this page, given the report that Rebecca Stewart and Will Orndorff wrote on the Ellet Valley Millipede. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And the next individual, and I'm...
It's Riley.
Thank you. Todd Riley?
German addresser, take this away, kind of figure this guy out, it's like Riley, Riley. My name's Todd Riley, I live at 1804 Schiller Lane. If it's okay, ladies and gentlemen, I would like to ask my neighbor from the Nellie's Cave neighborhood that are here tonight, anyone who lives in that community, would you please stand up? So I wanted to give a visual representation of what this piece of property means to us, please, thank you. Clearly put, it's the fabric of our life, it's an extension of our homes, it's where our children are growing up and playing, it's where many of us exercise and reflect and take time to focus so that we can do our jobs and be members of our community. So it is very important for all of us, when we found out that this property might be up for auction, or that it might leave our community, that we wanted to be, wanted to come and be represented. So I'll keep my comments short and brief. Jeff and the previous speaker both have spoken very eloquently on some of the scientific aspects, and simple things like the fact that we like to come up here and run, many people walk their dogs, it's an obvious recreational gem for you without having to do much development. I know Montgomery County Parks and Rec currently puts on events in this space from time to time. My daughter has actually partaken in some junior cycling events that take place there. There's a couple of the local cycling stores that once or twice a year host little kids' bike rides, basically, where they can come up, they go around one of the mowed laps that Jeff goes out and takes his personal time to mow this green space so people can use it. You know, they get a little trophy or something, and everybody feels good about it. That being said, it's pretty obvious that it means a lot to us as a neighborhood. I took a rough estimate of 15 users a day, at an hourly value of $15 an hour. 365 days a year, you're looking at an $82,000 a year annual impact just from users in terms of intrinsic value at the current state of the property. That's not doing anything to it, that's just 15 people from the community going and spending around an hour a day. I guarantee you, looking at everyone who stood up in here, we had more than 15 people. I mean, I can't even begin to count the folks I see come up and down my road. So I want you folks to understand the impact of selling that property and doing something else with it. The only other thing that I want to stress, being that I am on Schiller in the town limits, is that that road already is narrow. Most of the children back here that you see, we live on Schiller, and we're worried about road access. So in the event that it does become a commercial property, or that it does go to housing, the county seriously needs to look at road access coming from somewhere other than Schiller being the primary road for a subdivision or something that takes place in there. And that's my opinion. But my only other suggestion is that maybe somewhere down the road, if we can, consider making this a park or green space forest, then maybe we could honor one of our area cyclists, Lieutenant Louis Heslop, and memorialize a park in his name. So, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. The next individual signed up is Karen Coburn.
My name is Karen Coburn, I live at 1031 Nick Ryan Drive, just down from that area, and I guess I'm just going to say and emphasize what others have already said, it's a treasure for the neighborhood, it's a resource that many people use. We walk our dog daily there, my kids have spent a lot of time in those fields as they've been growing up, sledding there, playing there, it's a safe place to spend time, and it's, as others have said, it's incredibly beautiful, the scenery, the wildlife there, it's, I just consider it a treasure for the community. It's... It's used also as a way for my kids to safely and others, many others, to get safely from our neighborhood down to Nellie's Cave Park into the other streets nearby. It would change the character of the neighborhood and one of the things that drew us to the neighborhood initially was that green space. And I would just feel that the whole character of the neighborhood would be changed forever and would be taking away a resource that our whole family really values. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Elizabeth Briggs. It's hard to read your last name. Did I get it right?
You got it right. Thank you very much.
Please state your name.
I'm terrible at handwriting.
That's okay. Please state your name and address and you have five minutes.
Thank you. My name is Elizabeth Briggs. I live at 870 Crestwood Drive. I've lived there for 12 years. When we moved there, that empty parcel of land, if you want to call it empty, was one of the main attractions that drew us there. At that time, our children were three years old. Currently, they're 15. They have grown up being able, as many others have said, to play in that space, to have friends over from all over Blacksburg and Christiansburg and out in the county, to have a safe space to play, to sled, to run around outside. Only recently have some sidewalks been put in on Nellie's Cave Road and most of the walk from our neighborhood down to Nellie's Cave Park does not have sidewalks. It is not safe. If you walk through that field, there is a wonderful path through the woods that comes right out at the arboretum at Nellie's Cave. It has been a wonderful resource over the years to walk down, to go swimming, to enjoy the soccer fields and other resources that Nellie's Cave Park has. We have enjoyed it very, very much. My other concern is one that has also been mentioned. My property backs up to this parcel that might be auctioned off and I am very concerned about the geology of the area. I do understand that that parcel includes areas where the sandstone, which is not particularly permeable, changes over to limestone, which is, and that I remember from basic geology classes, that that's exactly where things like sinkholes occur. I would sincerely not like to have a sinkhole opening up on my property. And I feel that the, any development would encourage that type of possibility to happen in our neighborhood and as it stretches down into the valley. And I just feel very uncomfortable about that. And I'm also very uncomfortable at the idea that people who might purchase homes if they were built up there might have problems. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. The next speaker signed up is Ann Groves.
I'm Ann Groves and I live at 830 Crestwood Drive, Blacksburg. I was here when this issue came up years ago and it was, the property was left to the county from AEP and that was very special. And I have, our property is right on the park and we have watched children, old people like me, all kinds of people, walking. And I call walking recreation. When you say parks and rent, you don't just have to have a soccer field to have recreation. I think just walking on informal ground, some people prefer the ground as opposed to the tar man, you know? It's just pretty comfortable. So, I think that's something that it has. It's the only informal park in Blacksburg or in the county, really. And I also think that some of the supervisors, and this has been said before, should go over and put their feet on the property and look at it because it's really very special. And there's a couple of oak trees up there, you know, like this, and they've been there for hundreds, few hundred years. And that's exciting, too. So, once this property is sold, then it's gone forever as a park. But I just, I just think it's been so special to have an informal park where people walk and enjoy life right there. And anything that is a game, is creative, then that's kind of nice, too, as opposed to organized and competitive. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next is Monica, is it Daly?
Yeah.
Daly. Thank you.
My name is Monica Daly. I live at 1708 Shear Lane. I just moved in over a year ago or almost a year, bought the property. Was one of those people who found the remnants of the sinkhole when I started to do an addition on it and I didn't realize the whole issue about karst topography until the whole pipeline thing and what other people have talked about. But it cost him thousands. And so, anyway, that being said, I just want to reiterate what my neighbors have said, that so many people use the property for exercise and recreation. Sensibly, the location is so close to Nellie's Cave Park and so many people use the path between To and Fra. I mean, it's a constant stream of people and I live at the end of Shear Lane, so I see a lot of people. It just, it just sensibly, why not continue its use as a park? Or consider the possibility of dividing the acreage to allow a part of the park that's near Nellie's Cave to remain. I can tell you how many times I've walked up there and under the big oak tree that Ann was talking about, there's just a student from Tech who's in some of the housing down below, sitting, doing homework, under the tree. Just, it's unbelievable. It is really a special place. That being said, I just think that the community that this would affect if it was developed, we would appreciate time that the board could grant to come up with an alternative plan rather than selling it to a developer. And that's just something I want to just put out there and everybody's spoken so eloquently. But that's about, you know, that's all I can say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Dave Rhodes.
Good evening. My name's Dave Rhodes. I live at 704 Crestwood Drive with my wife and children. This is next to this property and we've lived here for 16 years. We moved here from Richmond and before that, I was living right next to an 8,000-acre state park, Oklahoma State Park. I was president of the Friends of Oklahoma State Park and so I was very involved in that state park when we lived next to it in Richmond in Chesterfield County. When we moved here, we moved from a country setting to a town setting, but I was very excited when I found out about this property. It had just recently been transferred to the county and it was my understanding, speaking to Ann, my neighbor, that there had been quite a discussion by the board supervisors at that time. There was discussions about whether to turn it into soccer fields or play fields and my understanding was that there was a study done. I've never seen it, but I would ask that before you make a decision, that you maybe look back and see if there was a study done by this board about that property. As all these folks have said, it's a very special piece of property. It sits on one of the highest points in Blacksburg. I'm kind of a geography nut and I like topographical maps. And so, my property is about 2,300 feet and this is an extension of a hilltop and it is one of the last remaining undeveloped hilltops in Blacksburg. If you come into Blacksburg, if you come in from South Main and you look up onto the hills, it's one of the last remaining undeveloped hilltops and it belongs to us. It belongs to the county. It belongs to everybody. My wife and I just came back from Yosemite Park. Yosemite Park was preserved by Abraham Lingus. That started the preservation. President after president, finally Teddy Roosevelt made it a national park. I'm not suggesting this is a national park, but I am suggesting it's a unique piece of land. When you stand up there, it's the very first piece of land to see sunlight in the morning coming from the east. You're almost on the eastern continental divide of the United States. You can see Benton Mountain, you can see Core Mountain down to the east, you can see Ellet Valley down towards Ellet Valley. You turn around and you can see Buffalo Mountain all the way out to Florida. You're on top of the highest point almost in Blacksburg. And as Jeff alluded to, another consideration, I think, is the path for the airport because you have hilltop or high top and you've got this and it is on the pathway where planes go in and out of the airport. When we moved there, I was excited about the property. I used to walk out on it because it was closed off and I thought it would be a great place for paths. So, I actually contacted Tom Bain, who used to be the head of Parks and Rec for Montgomery County, and he said, "No, it's not Parks and Rec. It actually is with grants." So, I contacted grounds, asked them if I could maybe consider making some paths and I started making some paths and those paths have developed. And there's probably half a mile, three quarters of a mile of paths up there that are used on a daily basis by children, by adults, by folks not just from this neighborhood but from all over the county. You meet people that come up there and park and there's a place for four or five cars on one end of it, there's a place for about seven or eight cars on another end. So, there is a way for people to come in and out and use it, not just from this neighborhood. So, I would ask that before you make a decision, go up there one evening, go up there one morning, wear your walking shoes, walk around it. It's a special, unique, natural resource. And I would suggest that as a governing body, one of your responsibilities is to preserve natural resources. We have natural resources that we're proud of in this county. We have the New River, we have McCooy Falls, we have the Cascades in Joplin. This is a natural resource that is worth preserving for future generations. And I would ask that you table any decision that you consider, if nothing else approaching Blacksburg, again, about maybe incorporating this into a park, but it is worth preserving. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the individuals that were signed up to speak on this issue, but anyone, is there anyone else that would like to speak? And I'm going to ask, ma'am, would you come forward? If there's any other individuals who would like to speak, I'm going to ask you to come down in the front row so we can go ahead and get you started. And so, if you just have a seat over here, ma'am, if you would please state your name and address and you have five minutes.
Hi, good evening. My name is Emily Alberts and I live at 801 Crestwood Drive. It's at the crest of Crestwood. That's what I tell people. And I used to tell people that you could see Roanoke Airport from my back deck, but it turns out it's Core Mountain Communications Tower. But it seems like you could just look out for 100 miles. I mean, it's beautiful. And when I was trying to decide on a house to move into, it was that field that my, the person selling the house wrote a big note on the chalkboard in the kitchen of my house and, "You've got to check this place out. You've got little kids." I had, at the time, a two-year-old and a three-year-old and she said, "You can get down to that Nellie's Cave Park just by sneaking through this beautiful field and taking a path through the woods with your kids. You don't have to go on any roads, you know, main streets or anything like that." And I did it every single day and we would pick berries. We just returned from berry picking just two days ago and, I mean, it's amazing. It's a treasure. And like my shirt says, Blacksburg is a special place and that's the most special place in Blacksburg to me. I mean, you guys really just have no idea the value that, you can go to a playground with monkey bars and everything's the plastic and, you know, climb on it, but the value of kids and nature and what they learn, bird watching, hiking the trails, looking at the trees, identifying all the different pine cones. I mean, we spend hours and hours and hours out there every season. In the winter time, we met some of our neighbors, they said, "You've got to check this hill out." So, I went over the field, there's this amazing sledding hill and it just draws everybody out there and it's just, you can't do that just anywhere. It's a really special activity in the winter when you're cooped up with young kids and there are a ton of young kids in our neighborhood. And it's just been so valuable to me as a mom. When my parents came into town, I said, "You guys have to check this field out. You're never going to believe it." Because like my neighbor said, it's up so high, you can just see for a panorama. And so, I brought my parents out there and you'll never believe, we look up and there's this 20-something-year-old guy setting up a table, putting a tablecloth over it, a bottle of wine. He pulls out a chair and has his girlfriend sit down and literally proposed to her right under the oak tree at the top of this field. And it was just like something out of a movie and my mom said, "Is this really happening? Do you know those people?" And I said, "No, but that's how special this field is." That's just, it's what it inspires. It's one of the last places that's just nature. There's not a, you know, jungle gym on it or paved basketball court on it. I mean, it's just like, look how beautiful the world is for a minute and look how special of a town you get to live in and be thankful. And so, I just, you know, encourage you guys to appreciate what that means to the health of a society and young kids today and how much they need to unplug, you know, just unhook themselves from all these different glowing screens and go just be at one with the birds and the rabbits and the berries and meet their neighbors in a natural way that's safe. And I think that's everything for me, but thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Yes, ma'am. Please come forward. Please state your name and address and you have five minutes.
I'm Lisa Nguyen and I live at 841 Crestwood Drive. I'm Jeff's wife. I just want to add to all the wonderful comments that have been made tonight about how wonderful this space is for our children, our next generations. Our now 11-year-old daughter, this spring, had the opportunity to see a newborn baby deer. Literally, it couldn't have been a day old, right at the beginning of the field. And that's something that in this day and age where we're constantly paving and, you know, doing all these new and aggressive actions that we tend to do quite often, that children don't have the opportunity to see and partake of, whether it's the bird's nest that's in the tree or the baby deer or the turtle that's crossing the road to get to the field. Our children have the opportunity, the children in Montgomery County and Blacksburg, etc., the town of Christiansburg, if they travel out to the areas like ours, they have the opportunity to partake of these items that, you know, it's rare. It's just rare these days. And I would like you to take that into consideration as well. And whether our address is Crestwood Drive, Blacksburg, we actually are technically in Montgomery County or Blacksburg residents, we're all, we're all here to show you how passionate we are about maintaining this space for our future generations. And selfishly, I really enjoy them. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. If there's any other speakers, I would ask that you start coming forward and having a seat.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Catherine Strickland. I live at 1803 Shear Lane in Blacksburg. We moved in about three years ago and this is a magical place. It's real special, but my husband, who's here tonight with our younger son, we have two boys, so we're very, we echo the sentiments that we really value this for our family, but also for our friends who we have come from in-town, out-of-town, everybody who comes, we take them to the field, we go to the field on a very regular basis. We have a dog as well and we just, we really enjoy it. My husband is an ecology professor at Virginia Tech and when he heard about this, his immediate, the first thought he had was of the trees and he was at the School of Forestry at Yale as well, did this post talk there. So, he's, and he's part of the Million Tree Study in New York City. And so, he said, "We've got to go measure these trees." And so, he measured one of the big black oaks there and it's over 200 years old and he went out and I have pictures of him measuring it, but he was thinking about the history of that tree and how much, how special the history is and that we at least need to preserve those trees all over that space. But I'm amazed at what incredible neighbors I have. I already am amazed at my neighbors. I love our community, but the fact that they took the time to plan and research and they've worked hard at preserving this, we are willing to do whatever it takes to preserve it. So, we want you to... So we want you to know that we are very committed to working with the town of Blacksburg on, you know, the community's behalf. I just finished the Blacksburg Citizens Institute, and I used to be in economic development in Athens, Georgia, too. So I'm eager to work on behalf to preserve this really special space. So thank you for your time, your consideration, and your review of the comments that my neighbors have asked you to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am, would you like to come forward? Please state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Erica Ziegert. I don't live up on Crestwood. My brother and his wife live at 821 Crestwood, but they couldn't be here tonight. So I'm here on their benefit. And I'm there every day with my dog, and I run. I would just like to show you a picture of when we were sledding, just to give you an idea on how it looks and how beautiful the trees are. Can I do that real quick?
We normally, for VIZIO, we require, because if you start putting it on, we have to do virus protections and making sure those things are not there. But if you would send that picture, we have a board of supervisors at email address. We'll be happy to receive that.
Yeah.
And so we can...
I just wanted to give you an idea of how beautiful this place is and the trees.
And I appreciate that. But we do, as far as electronics, but please send us an email. We'll be more than happy to look at that picture, I promise you.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who is not signed up that would like to talk about this public hearing matter?
I just have one thing I wanted to say. Can I get back up there for one second?
I think you had some time left over. Please come up. And I can't recall exactly how much, but we'll give you an extra minute. How's that?
I wrote it down when I was too excited. The stars out there, there was a group from the Universalist Unitarian Church that they wanted to witness the sunrise on the winter solstice because that was, you know, the highest point they could really get to in Blacksburg. They camped out there with their little ones in the freezing cold bundled up to do this. And there's a really nice spot, kind of at the end of the field, to watch the sun come up. And the night before, the stars out there, you just can't really get that sort of unfiltered just darkness to appreciate the night sky. And that was just one more thing I wanted to tell you how special that is and how important it is to keep it as a natural park just for activities like that, like the solstice and watching the stars and sort of just connecting to nature in a way that's, you know, educational and special and community building. So, thank you.
All right. Is there any other individuals who would like to speak in regards to this public hearing? And I would reiterate, there I can say big words occasionally, that we're not voting on this tonight. This is a chance for us to get public input. It may be put back on our agenda in a few weeks, but we are not voting on anything this evening regarding this piece of property.
Ma'am, same thing.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you all for coming. I am very impressed because you all have, I know, worked hard, and you've met, and you've put together a lot of information that board members should digest and should look at very carefully. We have heard you, but I was actively involved in the first issue. And this is my, in the 18th year or 19th year, one of those two, I've forgotten how many it is, but I was very much involved. As a matter of fact, when AEP decided that they wanted to do something with the land, they actually wanted to sell it. And I was at a meeting with people that I really didn't know at that point. And I just said to the people at AEP, "No, no. We want to keep it as it is." Or rather, we want, you know, whatever you want to do with it, you donate it to us or however it goes, but we don't really want you to sell it. And so we did have it donated to us. I don't say I'm the only person who did that. There were other people on the board who felt that they did not want it sold because we wouldn't have any real control over what was happening there. And at that time, we had not even investigated the carst land. It's only been in the last maybe 10 years around here, 15 years. Most of the people who've been here all their lives, they knew all about the carst land. But some of us, I came in 1962, so I'm a, I keep feeling as though I'm a native, but I'm not. I'm a newcomer, and I've been here that long, almost 53 years or so. And so, anyway, thank you for coming, and thank you for offering your suggestions. And thank you for being so concerned and wanting to work for your neighborhood. It's very refreshing to see that. And thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. The next item on our...
Question for clarification. And I guess my mind, I've got to think about this. But if there was a study done, can we have a copy of the study? And can we also find out if our Montgomery County Parks and Rec is actually using it for programs? Because that, I think we need that information when we're looking at things that everyone's talking about.
Yeah. I think we should have, Mitchell will get that information. But I don't think we're using it for programs at this time.
But I'd like to explore, just to make sure, to find out, is there any other aspects of this that the board would like staff to investigate? Okay. The next item is a request from taxation regarding the Blacksburg High School ban boosters. There is no one signed up in regards to this public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to this? And I know that people are standing up, and that's fine. You're here, but is there anyone here, if you would raise your hand, if you were here to speak on the Blacksburg High School ban boosters issue? I'm not seeing anyone. And, oh, okay. Please state your name again, and you've got five minutes.
I don't actually need five minutes. Again, my name is Elizabeth Briggs, and I am treasurer of ban boosters. And I was asked to be here this evening, although they said it wasn't necessary, to answer any questions that the board might have about this particular issue. So if there are any, I'm happy to answer any questions. That's all.
There was a staff in regards to this suggestion about turning the property over to the school board. Has, and it...
The trailer of the property.
The trailer over to the school board, potentially to avoid taxation in that manner. Has that been discussed? I know this is a public hearing, but I know that was a board suggestion, that are not staff suggestion. But has that been something that you all have thought about?
No, and this is the first I've heard of it. We are a nonprofit. This is the only...
And you've provided great documentation.
Oh, okay. All right.
Yes.
No, that is the first I've heard of it. I think of the circumstances that would make the school board responsible for the upkeep and everything else required with the trailer, and I'm not sure how they might feel about that.
Okay. Did, I know I've...
Just one thing, I talked to somebody about that because I heard the same thing. Somebody brought it up. If they'd done that, then they would lose control of the trailer.
Okay. Is there any, does that respond, cause any other questions or comments? Anything else? Yes, ma'am.
No, I don't know anything about it.
Okay.
Is there, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this issue? Seeing no one, I'm going to go ahead and close. And again, this is for public hearing. We will not be voting on this this evening. The next is regards to, and make sure I didn't lose my place, which I did. New Hope Residential Services Incorporated. Is there anyone here that would like to address the board in regards to this public hearing? Seeing no one coming forward, I'm going to go ahead and close this public hearing. Next is the amendment to entitled animals, proposed ordinance amending Chapter III Entitled Animals of the Code of Montgomery County by increasing compensation for livestock killed by dogs from not to exceed $400 per animal to not to exceed $750 per animal. Is there anyone who would like to address the board in regards to that? Seeing no one, I'm going to go ahead and close that, this aspect. The next item on our agenda is public address. There is no one signed up for public address, but you don't have to be signed up. And this is our opportunity to listen to you. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward to address the board? Yes, sir. Please come forward, state your name. You have five minutes. And please also provide your address.
Yeah, I'm Dr. Richard, 1600 Missalo Drive. And this coming Thursday, the Department of Environmental Quality will host its final public meeting for the North Fork, South Fork, Roanoke Rivers, Bradshaw Creek, and Wilson Creek, and Tributaries cleanup plan. And some streams in the upper Roanoke River watershed have too much sediment and bacteria, thus have been classified as impaired. Special studies called Total Maximum Daily were conducted in 2006 that establish sediment and bacteria reductions needed. Discussion includes types of water quality improvement projects that make sense for North Fork and South Fork rivers watershed. It will also address potential funding sources, steps moving forward, and the final cleanup plan document. It contains agricultural and residential potential best management practices for the waterways mentioned. These practices provide a roadmap to meet sediment and bacteria reductions. The implementation plan should provide measures, measurable goals, and the dates of expected achievement of water quality objectives. This implementation plan should also include the corrective actions needed and their associated costs, benefits, and environmental impacts. As a member of the Esteryan Committee, I urge our residents and local media to attend this meeting and be a part of the cleanup plan process in the North Fork and South Fork Roanoke Rivers and Tributaries. Our residents' knowledge of the local watersheds is extremely important for development of the cleanup plan. The meeting will be on this coming Thursday, again, July 14, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. It will be held in the Meadow Brook Community Room located off 460 Hood in Shaw's. And parking is available behind the Meadow Brook Library.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Is there any other individuals who would like to address the board during public address? Seeing no one, I'm going to go ahead and close public address. As far as addendum, we do have an addendum. Is there a motion to add this to new business?
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you, yes?
I think you should state what it is.
What it is? The addendum is in regards to the sheriff transfer from general contingencies to provide funding of up to $2,000 to cover travel costs for the sheriff's department to send deputies to attend the memorial services in Dallas for the following officers. The sheriff is here, and I know we've got a motion and go ahead and add it to new business. Should we go ahead now and go ahead and call and roll? Martin?
Yes.
Madam Clerk, would you please call and roll?
It's the roll.
This is just to add it to the agenda, and then we're going to put it under new business.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. DeMoss?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Parton?
Aye.
Mr. Crewe?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Send an honest to add to new business.
Since we have the sheriff here, is there any objections to adding it as our first subject?
No.
Mr. Parton, or Sheriff Parton, would you please come forward and just kind of give a board an overview?
Good evening, Chair Tuck, members of the board. I've been before you twice now, and both times I've asked for money. I'm sorry about that. I promise I'm coming back one time just to say hi. But these are sad circumstances. Before I get into that, can I give you a brief update on the last time I asked you for money? The new Kenwood radios were purchased. They are in the programming phase now. The shot detection panels themselves have been upgraded. I have been in constant contact with that company. I have even been out on shoots to other ranges with other departments and trying not to become the company spokesperson. But we are going to be the first law enforcement agency in the country to deploy this technology. And right now, I can't think of a better time. But the panels have even been improved over the ones that I showed you that were rectangular. The panels have now been made so that they are going to contour to our particular body armor vest. So they will offer side protection as well, as much as our vests do. The Bluetooth technology has been improved as well. It's now USB capable, which means we can input every individual deputy's medical and pertinent information into this Bluetooth signal as it's sent. So if one of our deputies is shot, not only is it going to wake me up at 3:00 in the morning with a text message, but it's going to go to our new regional 911, and that display is going to give all that information to the dispatchers, along with the rescue squad, before they ever get to the individual who might be unconscious at that point and might be dying. Those minutes and seconds that we save during that can mean saving that deputy's life. So I need to tell you how grateful I am to you all. That is just amazing. I can't wait to get it underway. And it probably would have already been here and unrolled had the timing not been such with the new regional 911 center opening. Because right now, we're in the middle of transitioning. We've already transitioned, and it went seamlessly. It was wonderful. Christiansburg transitioned last week. Virginia Tech is in line to transition next week, then Blacksburg. At that point, all four agencies will be totally in the regional 911 center.
Wow.
So it's fabulous.
Great.
And Montgomery County is being very progressive, and it's being noticed. I can tell you that because I've gotten calls from sheriffs around the state saying, "What are you doing?" And I'm just telling them, "I'm not. I'm not doing a thing. I'm loaded with good people, and I've got a great board supervisor she's looking out for us." So thank you. Back to Dallas. I don't know if any of you have ever had the opportunity to attend a funeral where the sheriff's office honor guard has participated. I'm extremely proud of that unit for a lot of reasons. I'm a founding member, and we are not a color guard. Color guards are a dime a dozen. Police departments and sheriff's offices have them all over the country. We are one of the few dedicated honor guard units in the state. We don't do parades. We don't do handshakes. We don't do any of that mess. And thankful for all of those folks, but we do law enforcement officers and veterans. That's all we do. I want to send two of those individuals to Texas. And I can tell you, looking back on when Eric was killed, there were police officers here from all over this country. And I know we can't attend every funeral. And two more officers were killed today in Michigan.
Yes.
In a courthouse. So we've made contact with some folks in Dallas. They've been bombarded by sheriff's officers all over the country. We have a thin blue line explorer. We have a beautiful vehicle to send, and I had two honor guard deputies who have been preparing all day to get ready to go. They're ready to leave whenever I call them and say, "We got some money, hit the road." There's no hotel reservations that have been made. I don't know if they will stop on the way. I'm anticipating they will drop straight through and trade off. Probably two or three nights hotel. I told them to stay three or four days. If they can hit two or three funerals, that's fine. The funerals are very separated down there. There's one in Fort Worth. There's another one on the other side of Dallas. They're not in the city. So that's what I'm trying to do. I want us to be in Texas because I want to support or follow law enforcement officers. But I want... But I want, uh, I want Montgomery County to be represented, because we're, we're doing a fine job, and you guys are a big part of that. So that's what I'm asking for. Uh, any money that's not spent, obviously, I told them, stick to the 3DM, receive everything, and any money that's not spent, I will bring right back.
Supervisor King, any questions?
No, I appreciate what you're doing, I really do. And I had the opportunity to see you on a guard several times. You're fantastic.
Supervisor Perkins?
Well, I feel the same as, um, Todd. I'm pleased to see what you're doing and what you want to do, um, for all the good reasons. And I have been so, I don't know exactly how to, uh, what to say and what word to use. I don't usually, I'm not usually at a loss for words. But the things that have gone on recently with regard to our law enforcement officers really are very upsetting. We, I think we have a good relationship around here, and I think that there are just, I, I actually heard the police chief today in Dallas say, "Well, yes, there are some bad eggs in almost every organization you come around." Because he was obviously talking about one of the incidents that precipitated what was going on. But to have, um, five officers killed, um, by someone who was certainly almost delusional, or probably was, is, is just a horrible thing wherever it occurs. And so, um, I, um, I think it's great what's going on. Thank you.
Supervisor-
That is what you're going on for.
Supervisor Creed?
Yeah, I'm all ready to go.
Supervisor-
I don't, I don't last very long, but, uh, I say, get it done. We'll, we'll find them out.
Supervisor Biggs?
Well, I just wanna say, Hank, that I appreciate everything that you and your officers do day in and day out. This whole situation has been very upsetting, and upsetting again today to hear what happened in the courthouse in Michigan. Um, I appreciate you coming and asking and, and bringing something that's manageable as far as money goes, but really, what really counts is you being there. And, um, I was honored to attend Eric Sutton's funeral, and also Louis Heslop's funeral. And not just the funeral, but the funeral home. And to see what the honor guard is truly, truly moving, and, and, um, I hated the circumstances, but I want to tell you that that connection and that, I call it family. I mean, it made it easier for everyone to see the officers there and to see their dedication and to see the changing, the rotation. It's like it grabs at your heartstrings, and I did not realize that, you know, you were one of the very few. Congratulations on that, because when something happens like that, I think that formality and that structure is needed by everyone. And so I wanna thank you, um, for, for all of that. And I truly support the $2,000, and maybe, um, you can let some of us know after they come home, you know? And I'm praying that we don't have any more of these where we're gonna have to send people. But I do know at Eric's, I looked around in that parking lot behind the church that day, and to see people from California, from all over the country, they're representing to be for the Montgomery County Sheriff's Department, to be there for Eric, that truly was moving. So, thank you.
Supervisor Demoss?
Um, I'm gonna tell you a little story, and, and in that story, I'm gonna express my appreciation to you for your willingness to send officers or deputies. Thirteen years ago, I attended the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Week in DC. We started that by biking, Bike for Blue, from Richmond all the way to Washington DC. So we spent, it was maybe a 14-hour day, um, following officers, bike, bike officers from Richmond to DC. Um, we met, we all met at the memorial with all the other law enforcement officers from around the country that were assembled there, um, and had a, a very nice, moving vigil. Um, and then the next day, there was an address from the president on the White House lawn. And I'm trying not to get emotional, because this past week has been very difficult for me. We happened to be on the lawn right next to Dallas police officers, and I was preparing to move to Dallas. Now, that didn't work out, I came back, but I did move to Dallas, um, and lived down there for a short period of time. Um, and those Dallas police officers, I reached out to them and said, "Hey, I'm gonna move down to Dallas in just, just a few months." And they embraced me like I was part of the family, because I was there with other law enforcement officers. And, um, they were the only friends that I had in Dallas. I was only there for a short period of time, and so I didn't have the opportunity to make very many friends, but they treated me as if I had been part of their, um, family for as long as I can remember, just because of that simple connection. Um, so in hearing what had happened in Dallas, um, spent a lot of time in tears and a lot of time updating, refreshing, looking for the names of, of who was lost down there. Um, I really appreciate you being willing to send your officer, your deputies to Dallas. Um, I am extremely supportive of funding that trip. Thank you very much for what you're doing.
Thank you. Supervisor Shepherd?
I appreciate everything you do, Hank, and your department. Being involved in law enforcement for several years, a short period of time really, um, I got to see too many of those. One of the last ones I attended was Derek Kraus', and where his grave is situated, you can see back up the bypass. And to know that you have the support of people and officers all over the country is such a great feeling. And I would support you for whatever you ask for.
Um, I would just repeat what my fellow supervisors have said is, and I would just look and say, "Is there a motion in regards to the $2,000?"
Summate.
Second. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Seven eyes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair Tuck, thank you especially.
No problem.
Thank you all.
Um, I neglected and jumped ahead of consent agenda. Is there a motion in regards to consent agenda?
Motion. Second.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Seven eyes.
New business. Virginia World War I and World War II Anniversaries Commemorations Resolution to Support the Virginia World War I and World War II Anniversaries Commemoration Commission and to form a committee to aid in the planning for the commemora- commemoration period.
Summate.
Second.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Moss? Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Seven eyes.
Uh, next, resolution to commemorate Louis, Louis Heslop, Montgomery County Sheriff's Department.
Summate.
Second.
Any discussion?
Thank you for getting this so quickly and for the work done on the resolution. Um, I think all of us probably know that wherever I go, I'm still talking about Louis to people. You know, you just know, he knew so many people, people that you didn't know he knew, and we end up talking about Louis. So, he's still with us.
One gentleman mentioned it tonight, you know, even that was speaking to us.
And obviously, I, I won't take any credit for getting the resolutions, that should be Vicki and the staff and, and the like, but, uh, I was delighted to make sure it was on the agenda.
And Ms. Murray for bringing it up.
And yes, absolutely. Um, is it, I believe it was, was there a motion and a second? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Seven eyes.
Resolution to commemorate Jeffrey McCoy, Long Shot McCoy Volunteer Fire Department. Is there a motion?
Motion. Second.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Seven eyes.
Resolution to commemorate Donald Don Robertson Elliston Volunteer Fire Department. There a motion?
Motion.
Aye.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Seven eyes.
Subject E, resolution to commemorate Glenn Wood Reiner Volunteer Fire Department. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Seven eyes.
And, let's see. Next is county attorney's report.
Uh, yeah, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to give the board a quick update on, um, Ms. Elephant, Carolyn Elephant, the attorney in DC. She'll be helping us, assisting the county in the MVP FERC process. We expect, I asked her to give us a, kind of an idea of what she can do for us within certain budget limits, and we should be getting that information hopefully shortly. She's not on now, so she's having to get up to speed with also the July 4th holiday. I think it's, um, delayed just a little bit, so we should have something hopefully by the end of the week.
Thank you. Thank you very much. County administrators' report.
I have no report, Mr. Chair.
Usually Creed says, "I just have a couple of things."
I, I know, I thought I'd change it up a little bit.
Uh, board members' report. Supervisor Shepherd?
No report.
Supervisor King?
I just got one thing, and I shared with y'all earlier. I was going to a, to Alaska Yankee game yesterday, going down the interstate, and I seen elderly couple in a duly pickup truck pulling a long camper. And I, right before I got by, all the cars was getting over, and I looked, and there was a state trooper out there next to the interstate changing these elderly people's tires. Uh, you know, I, I wanted to stop and thank him, but you know, there's so much traffic, but I just want people to think about law enforcement. I mean, they do all they can for people. They really do, and I appreciate Montgomery County Sheriff's Department, honestly, I really do. Chrisburg Police Department, and Blacksburg Police Department, and Virginia Tech.
Thank you. Supervisor Perkins?
I just wanna reiterate that, because I was gonna say that, um, you know, I've had to call on the help of, of our law enforcement officers, and I, I really think that everyone that I've talked to, or been a part of, or seen, um, and any, anything that goes on, um, I am very appreciative of it, and I wanna say, I think that we have one of the finest groups of people that I know of, uh, on our, uh, sheriff, in our sheriff's department, really and truly. So, um, that's my heart good.
Supervisor Creed?
Yeah, again, I'll keep it real, real short and sweet. Uh, I am in very, very appreciative mode for the sheriff's department that we have here, and also for the ones who have, have, have lost their loved ones, so, uh, that's all.
Supervisor Biggs?
Um, I'd like to second what everyone has said about, um, our sheriff's office, and also, you know, our Virginia Tech police, and, um, town of Blacksburg, town of Christiansburg, state troopers also. I mean, I, I remember on Interstate 81 one time, when I had to be in my car and had to pull off the side of the road, and a state trooper came to check on me. And I said, "Well, just have a B in the back," you know? So, um, but, I tell you, it's really, it's been a sad situation, um, what's been going on for the last week, and it, it, it's, um, like you're almost afraid to watch the news or turn on the news, 'cause it's gonna be something else each day. And so I'm hoping that, you know, everyone can unite. And what, I think what's impressed me goes back to what happened at Tech. And when I saw the law enforcement agencies all come together that day at the tragedy at Virginia Tech, it was a good lesson to all of us, there are no boundaries in law enforcement or for fire and rescue. And sometimes I think that we as local government, and state government, and national government, you know, could take a good lesson from that. There are no boundaries when you're trying to serve people. And, um, the only other thing that I had a question about was, uh, in the, the land that we're talking about in Ms. Perkins' district, that airport thing that kept being mentioned, could we get verification about the airport path?
That's true.
I think that's a good idea.
I forgot, I forgot to ask that, and, and that's all I have to say. And, and make sure, Hank, that it's safe travels for those two.
Supervisor Demoss?
Well, I don't have anything to add to everything that's already been said, except that I do agree with it. Um, other than that, I have no report.
Um, I have a brief report. I was on vacation this past week, and I was driving through the eastern part of North Carolina. And many, you may remember, the planning commission has been working on zoning for solar farms. I had no idea how many solar farms there were in the eastern part of, of North Carolina. It would seem like I'd go by a cornfield, a tobacco field, and then a solar farm. Um, I would like to commend Emily, uh, because, Emily Gibson, our planning commission, or our planning director. I had brought up the idea, maybe we need to look out for wind farms, and she was, one, brave enough to tell me what I needed to hear, which was, "We probably don't need to worry about the wind farms, we need to worry about solar, and we need to come up with some reasonable regulations." And as the liaison with the planning commission, they have been working on this now for a couple of months. I'm hopeful that they will be presenting us something, uh, and have, you know, proving something and sending it up to us, um, very soon, and will be adding that to our agenda. Uh, but I'm very appreciative of, of that forward thinking and the willingness to, to look at someone who I guess technically might be your boss and say, "Hey, look, I think you're going in the wrong direction." I, I greatly appreciate that. Um, I also appreciate the law enforcement, um, when we have been going through these,